Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the reorganizational meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, current time, 9:00 a.m. If you'll please join us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, this morning we begin with grateful hearts as we say a special prayer for our commissioners. We pray for wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, the ability to work in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We are reminded that public service isn't easy, but few things worthwhile ever are. For the agenda set for today, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us and pray that all decisions benefit our neighbors who call this place our community home. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good morning. First item of business will be a general public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time, please come forward and just let us know who you are for the record. Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. At this time, we'll begin our process to reorganize the Board of County Commissioners. This time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our clerk, Clerk Miller. Good morning.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to recommend Shawn Mitchell.
Second.
Microphone's not working.
I heard it.
It is a reorg, so for those of you who have never seen this before, this is always difficult every year because we only do it once.
Can she use the podium? Can she use the podium?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, would it be okay, do you have your things in front of you? Would you like to use the podium?
Yeah, I'm getting the wireless.
Okay.
Yeah, I was getting the wireless. We're getting the batteries.
I think it would be okay, as long as you have your materials with you, okay? Much better. We've got to turn it up a little bit. I think it's just a test. We just do this to all the new clerks.
You're good.
You're good?
Okay.
Technical difficulty.
Well, this is just, this is just practice.
Mr. Chair, maybe what we could do is have her come, our microphones are on, and so perhaps she could come over and sit where Mr. McIntyre is.
Just don't, just don't stop the music yet, okay?
This happens every time.
Oh, that's a low chair. Good morning!
The Dan McIntyre special.
And I'm sure you guys can all hear me now. Okay, that's great.
Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you. All right, one more time. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of County Commissioners.
Very good.
I'm very excited to be here with you guys this morning. The Board of County Commissioners is now in session, and the floor is open for nominations for the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Secretary, I'd like to recommend Shawn Mitchell as Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'll vacate the seat and turn it over to the new Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Would you please call for nominations for the Vice Chair?
The floor is now open for nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Commissioner Hutchinson.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Commissioner Hutchinson. Are there any other nominations? The floor is closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and turn the meeting over to the current Chair of the Environmental Control District, Chairman Zadowski.
Thank you. Good morning. We will open the meeting with my next page. So, there we go. At this time, the San Luis County Environmental Control District meeting is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Environmental Control District. Is there a nomination?
Second.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask, I think what you might want to do is turn the meeting over to the Clerk of the Court, and then she will take that part for you.
I knew that. I prefaced this whole meeting because we've done, we do this once a year, and that's it, and there's no practice involved, so, okay. Madam Clerk.
At this time, the St. Lucie County Environmental Control District meeting is now in session. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair of the Environmental Control District. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Commissioner Bart.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to close nominations? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. At this time, we'll call for nominations for the Vice.
Hold on, the Clerk does that.
The Clerk is going to do that right now, so.
All right. Will you please call for nominations for Vice Chair of the Environmental Control District, and the nomination will be made and seconded.
I'll nominate Commissioner Bart.
I'll second that.
The newly elected Chair?
So, Mr. Chair, you have a nomination that's been motioned and seconded for Commissioner Bart's to serve as the Vice Chair. You would now call for the vote.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. We will now take the erosion control into recess.
No, you're going to take the environmental control in recess.
That's what I said. Didn't I say that?
No, you said erosion.
Okay. Because I was looking at my next page. We're only here for your entertainment, folks.
This time, the St. Lucie County Erosion District will come into order. Madam Clerk, would you please ask for nominations?
Certainly. At this time, the St. Lucie County Erosion Control District meeting is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Erosion Control District. Do we have a nomination?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, will you please call for nominations for the Vice Chair of the Erosion Control District, and the nomination will be made and seconded.
It'd be my honor. At this time, I'd open the floor up for any nominations for Vice Chair for the Erosion District.
I nominate Commissioner Townsend.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We will now call together the meeting in order and turn the meeting.
At this time, I'd like to put the Erosion District in recess. It's a motion.
We will now call together the Mosquito Control District and turn the meeting back over to the Clerk.
Good morning. At this time, the St. Lucie County Mosquito Control District meeting is now in session. The floor is now open for nominations for the Chair of the Mosquito Control District. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Shawn Mitchell.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, will you please call for nominations for the Vice Chair of the Mosquito Control District, and the nomination will be made and seconded.
Okay, we'll call for nominations for Vice Chair of the Mosquito Control District, and the nomination will be made and seconded.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to off-recommend Commissioner Townsend as Vice Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Chair, will you call the roll? Madam Clerk? Or, no?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. We will now recess as the Mosquito Control District and turn the meeting over to the current Chair of the Sustainability District.
Going to open the Sustainability District meeting, and Madam Clerk, if you will, ask for nominations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the meeting of the St. Lucie County Sustainability District is now in session. The floor is now open for nominations for the Chair of the Sustainability District. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Commissioner Bart.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, will you please call for the nominations for Vice Chair of the Sustainability District, and the nomination will be made and seconded.
Okay, can I get a nomination for Vice Chair of the Sustainability District? I will need a motion and a second.
I nominate Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, I will close the sustainability agenda.
Okay, we will reconvene. First of all, I'd like to thank Clerk Miller.
Thank you.
For putting this process together today, and without a microphone, you were just as good as with a microphone. And at this time, I'd like to present Chairman Zadowski with a gift. I know that it takes a lot to be, to take the chairmanship, a lot of hours, a lot of time away from family and friends, so at this time, I'd like to present you a plaque of.
Long Creek? Long Creek. Now, that's funny.
Get a picture with you. And again, thank you for all you've done, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate you. We will now reconvene the Board of County Commissioners, and I'll call this meeting to order. Moving on to A1, and this is to address the five appointments on list. On the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve. Will you serve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. For Public Safety Coordinating Council, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve. Roundtable of St. Lucie County, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve.
Yes, sir.
Tourist Development Council, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski to serve.
Yes, sir.
Treasure Coast Workforce Consortium, I'll be taking this one because the Chair is required to serve. Moving on to A2, I would like to ask Franny Hutchinson to serve on the 19th Judicial Conflict Committee.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Affordable Housing Committee, I'd like to ask Commissioner Kathy Townsend, serving for District 1. Art in Public Places, I'd like to ask Linda Bart's, Commissioner Bart's, to serve.
Okay.
Blue Way Advisory Committee, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski to serve.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Cavicing Board, I'd like to ask Kathy Townsend, Commissioner Townsend, to serve. Commission Children Services Council, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Council on Aging, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve.
Yes, sir.
County Coalition for Responsible Management of Lake Okeechobee and St. Lucie and Calahouche Estuaries, I'd like to ask Franny Hutchinson, Commissioner Hutchinson, to serve, and Commissioner Townsend as an alternate.
Yes, sir.
Friends of St. Lucie County Library, I'll be serving as that. Homelessness Task Force, I'd like to ask Commissioner Townsend to serve. Indian River Lagoon Council Board of Directors, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski to serve, and Commissioner Hutchinson to be alternate.
Thank you, sir.
Indian River Lagoon Scenic Highway, Treasure Coast Corridor, I will be serving and asking Commissioner Zadowski to be alternate.
Thank you.
Land Acquisition Selection Committee, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski to serve.
Thank you.
Law Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to ask Commissioner Townsend to serve. Medical Examiner's Advisory Task Force, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bart's to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Transportation Planning Organization, I'd like myself, Commissioner Zadowski, Commissioner Hutchinson, Commissioner Townsend, and Commissioner Bart's as an alternate.
We're all in, sir.
Okay. Regional Transit Organization, I'd like to ask Commissioner Townsend to serve, and myself as an alternate. Property and Homeowners Association, I'll be serving as that. St. Lucie County Fire District, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski and Commissioner Bart's to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Treasure Coast Community Action Tripartite Board, I'd like to ask Linda Bart's and Designee Natalie Tennyson to serve.
Thank you.
Treasure Coast Education Research Development Authority, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board, I'd like to ask Commissioner Townsend to serve. Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, I'll be serving as that. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, I'd like to have Commissioner Townsend and myself with Commissioner Hutchinson and Commissioner Zadowski as alternates. Value Adjustment Board, I'd like to ask Commissioner Zadowski and Commissioner Hutchinson and myself to serve.
That'll be fine, sir.
And alternates, Commissioners Zadowski and Commissioner Townsend.
Very good.
And to wrap it up, Workforce Development Board of the Treasure Coast, I'd like to ask Commissioners Zadowski to serve.
Will do.
Moving on to Item A3, do we have a motion to approve the at-large committee appointments?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion approved. Moving on to Item A4, do we have a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Item A4, do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Zadowski's committee appointments?
Move approval.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Item A5, do we have a motion to approve committee appointments, my committee appointments?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Moving on to Item A6, do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Bart's committee appointments?
Move approval.
Do we have a motion? And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Moving on to Item A7, do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Hutchinson's committee appointments?
So moved.
We have a motion by Bart, second.
Second.
Second by Hutchinson.
Second by, well, it's her appointment, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'm double-supporting him, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to Item A8, do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Townsend's committee appointments?
Move approval.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Moving on to A9, I'd like to turn it over to the County Administrator, Mr. Tiffin, for the at-large appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Item 5A9 is the appointment to the Code Enforcement Board, the at-large member vacancy. Mr. Richard Pankos' term on the Code Enforcement Board is set to expire next month. Mr. Pankos is currently seeking reappointment. The Board Liaison has confirmed he is eligible to serve another term. In addition to his application, there are six applications attached to this agenda item for the Board's consideration. All of the applicants have been sent to the Board Liaison for review to ensure that the applicants meet the minimum requirements to serve. You have the ballots in front of you. Staff recommends that you vote and appoint one at-large member from the attached applications. And so, when you are done, just pass them on down. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we are, as you have noticed, we are having some technical issues this morning. The, before we get to the regular meeting, we're going to need to bring down the audio system and reboot it, and so, once we are finished with the organizational meeting, if you could take a recess and allow us to do that, then we will resume the regular meeting shortly.
That's fine.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for the Code Enforcement tally sheet, we have five votes for Mr. Richard Pankos, so Mr. Pankos has been reappointed to the Code Enforcement Board.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Pankos. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the annual reorganization meeting.
We have a few more to go through.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm going to do it now.
Will you now? Go ahead, Howard.
Mr. Chair, we're now at Item 5A10, and this is appointment to the Contractors Examining Board. This is an at-large member vacancy. There is currently one vacant position on the Contractors Examining Board. A total of eight applications were received expressing interest in serving. All of the applications were forwarded to the Board Liaison for review to ensure that they meet the minimum requirements. Because the vacancy specifically calls for a certified plumber, only one applicant met the minimum qualifications, Mr. Adam Simpson. Staff confirmed that he is currently the only person qualified to serve as the plumbing representative. Staff recommends that the Board vote and appoint one at-large member to fill the plumber vacancy.
I make a motion to approve Adam Sampson for the Contractor Board.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So, we're not doing a ballot on that? Are we doing a ballot?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
I was a little confused.
It's just the one, it's just the one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they done with the vote?
We done with the vote?
Before we leave this subject, I know that we've got another vacancy.
We've long been served and very graciously by Mr. Doug Davis as a general contractor throughout the years, and since this is being televised, I would just encourage any other applicant, the one thing, that they have to be a general contractor, whether residential or commercial, if I'm not mistaken, to encourage them to fill out an application.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Point well made.
Thank you for that, too. We will be gathering those applications and bringing that vacancy to the Board in the future. So, for Item 5A10, Mr. Adam Sampson was confirmed as the Contractors Examining Board Plumber Representative. Takes that, takes us to Item 5A11. This is the appointment to the Treasure Coast Health Council. This is an at-large member vacancy. Kathleen Burdette's term on the Treasure Coast Health Council recently expired. The Health Council of Southeast Florida has requested that the Board reappoint Ms. Burdette for another term as the consumer representative. She is currently seeking reappointment, and her application is attached for your review.
I'd like to just make the motion to reappoint her back to the Board.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, and a second in unison by Commissioner Hutchinson. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Burdette was confirmed to be the Treasure Coast Health Council appointment. Takes us to Item 5A12, which is the appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Program Citizen Advisory Task Force. This is an at-large member vacancy. There is currently a vacancy on the Community Development Block Grant Program Citizen Advisory Task Force. Thirteen applications were submitted for the Board's consideration. The Community Development Block Grant Program has an eligibility requirement and residency requirement. All of the applications were reviewed by the Board Liaison to ensure they met the minimum qualifications to serve. Out of the thirteen applicants, only one met the qualifications. Twelve were ineligible to serve. Staff recommends that the Board vote and appoint one at-large member, Mr. Lloyd Ragubar, to fill the vacancy on the Community Development Block Grant Program Citizen Advisory Task Force.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Lloyd Ragubar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion.
That takes us to 5A13. This is the appointment to the Treasure Coast Education and Research Development Authority, at-large member vacancy. Due to the resignation of Kathleen McGinn, the Treasure Coast Education Research and Development Authority, otherwise known as TERCERA, request that the board ratify their appointment of Catherine Hensley to the TERCERA Board. Staff recommends that the board ratify Catherine Hensley's appointment.
Is this the only applicant that has applied for this? Is there any other application that has come in?
That I don't know, it is a recommendation from the actual TERCERA Board themselves.
So again, because she's the only one that's being offered on.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. And the other nominations, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley's appointment to the TERCERA Board has been confirmed. That takes us to 5A14, this is an appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Michael Millstone's term is set to expire next month. He has been serving as the board's at-large representative on the Library Advisory Board, and he is not seeking reappointment. Seven applications were received and forwarded to the board liaison, and they are all qualified to serve. The applications are attached for the board's review and consideration. Staff recommends that the board vote and appoint one member to serve on the Library Advisory Boards, and you will have your ballots in front of you for this one.
Thank you, Howard, and we'll be awaiting the ballots.
has received four votes from Commissioner Zadowski, Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Bartz, Commissioner Hutchinson, and Charlie Bridge received one vote from Commissioner Townsend. Therefore, Amanda Botha has been confirmed for the Library Advisory Board by a vote of four to one.
Thank you. Next, we have the Historical Commission voting ballot.
Thank you, sir. There's currently one position on the Historical Commission whose term is set to expire at the end of this month, and it's for Betty Jo Stark, and she is seeking reappointment. In addition to Ms. Stark's application, there are six additional applicants. All of the attached applications have been sent to the board liaison for review to ensure that they meet the minimum requirements to serve. Staff recommends that the board vote and appoint one at-large member from the attached For the Historical Commission tally sheet, Commissioner Zadowski voted for Charlotte Stalberg. Commissioners Mitchell, Bartz, Hutchinson, and Townsend voted for Betty Jo Stark. Therefore, Betty Jo is reconfirmed for the Historical Commission by a vote of four to one.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the annual reorg.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair, yes, if we can just recess for a few minutes while we reboot the session.
And folks, just to let you know, and those in the audience and those who are watching, we will be reconvening in about five minutes, so we have some technical difficulties. To order the meeting of, the regular meeting of November 16, 2021. We've already completed the invocation and the pledge during the reorg. I'd like to open for public comment. Anything excluding public hearing items, is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to have an approval of the minutes for the B O C C regular meeting of October 19, 2021, and the minutes of the tri-county meeting of October 26, 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz, a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go into the proclamation approval, resolution number 21403, congratulating the Florida Atlantic University Harbor Branch Oceanic Institute of 50 years on world-class research fueled by the spirit of ocean exploration. Today, this will be accepted by Cara Perry, Associate Vice President of Communications of-
They're shaking their head.
Are they here?
Hi, Cara.
We also have James Sullivan.
Yes.
Executive Director of FAU Harbor Branch Oceanographic Institute. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution, and I'll meet you down there, sir, to present.
A resolution congratulating the Florida Atlantic University Harbor Branch Ocean Graphic Institute on 50 years of world-class research fueled by ocean exploration in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Founded in 1971 is Seward Johnson and Edwin Link, Florida Atlantic University Harbor Branch Ocean Graphic Institute, has provided 50 years of groundbreaking research and exploration to address the critical issues facing the oceans and impacting human health and well-being. From developing new cancer therapies to working on cutting-edge aquaculture techniques for global food security, to tackling toxic algal blooms, FAU Harbor Branch has remained steadfast in the pursuit of ocean science for a better world. Over the course of 50 years, program expansion at FAU Harbor Branch, marine scientists, engineers, educators, and students have grown to serve as valuable community resource, increasing the reach of over 100 miles along Florida's east coast, and remain a trusted leader for marine and ocean science research, conservation, and education worldwide. FAU Harbor Branch was founded in the spirit of ocean exploration to unveil the mysteries of the deep. To this day, FAU Harbor Branch relentlessly pursues innovative ocean research while providing top-tier educational programs that will lead us to solve the most pressing issues facing our oceans. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby congratulate Florida Atlantic University Harbor Ocean Graphic Institute on 50 years of world-class research fueled by the spirit of ocean exploration in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board further urges the citizens of St. Lucie County to learn more about Florida Atlantic Harbor Ocean Graphic Institution tours, exhibitions, programs, lectures, and events in St. Lucie County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted the 16th day of November 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz, do I have a second? Commissioner Townsend, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I'd like to present this to Mr. Sullivan. Thank you so much, sir. We'll turn around and we'll get a picture. Would you like to say a few words?
Okay. Thank you, and I'll keep this extremely brief. I really do want to thank all of you, the citizens of St. Lucie County, and all the commissioners for this recognition of Harbor Branch and all that we do. And I would just like to say, we do a lot of great science, but we couldn't do it without your support, and I mean everybody. And it's very critical that we're recognized for what we do, and we continue to get the support of St. Lucie County and people around the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. At this time, I'd like to read, have resolution 21408 recognizing the efforts of the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen and proclamation proclaiming November 19, 2021 as Women's Entrepreneur Day. And this will be accepted by Jessica Parish, Vice President of the PSL Businesswomen and the CEO of St. Lucie County United Way.
A resolution recognizing the efforts of Port St. Lucie Businesswomen and proclaiming November 19, 2021 as Women's Entrepreneurship Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. The Port St. Lucie Businesswomen have operated as independent and independent organization separate from any national or international entity, free to set forth its own mission, goals, and agendas. From four founding members in 1980, they have grown strong and evolved into professional women's organization representing a variety of businesses and levels of management, government officials, entrepreneurs, and women business owners. Their continued commitment to the community while providing leadership through action has been steady throughout the history and continues strongly today. Their 40th anniversary Brick Pathway Project brought in critical funds throughout the pandemic, continuing to provide much-needed community grants and scholarships for local women and children. In 2020, PSLBW awarded their highest number of grants to these local agencies. Recognized during Women's Entrepreneurship Day, they stand as a strong example with a large majority of women-owned small businesses. Women in business provide and promote revenue to their community and support local organizations, schools, and community projects. They inspire and create more opportunities and mentorships for other women and young girls to succeed. They have offered seminars and other community programs to address the concerns of business women and offer learning opportunities for community members, as well as provide career mentoring to young women. Beginning their fourth decade, the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen continue to support and serve many communities' needs in a positive manner. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim November 19, 2021 as Women's Entrepreneurship Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, and recognizes the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen for their outstanding community service efforts in St. Lucie County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted the 16th day of November 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Townsend, and I have a second by Commissioner Bartz.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I'd like to present this to Jessica and permit her to say a few words.
I made a poll. Come on, ladies. Jessica's so shy. Snappy. Come on, lady.
It's good to see you again. Forty years. Congratulations.
She wanted to get a one.
Hold the press.
Pictures are very important.
Take two.
Get it.
Thank you. I get a little techie here with my speech and my phone. Good morning, for the record, Jessica Parish, President and CEO of the United Way of St. Lucie County, but today, I'm representing Port St. Lucie Businesswomen as their Vice President. Allow me to share some history. It was mentioned in the proclamation that we've been in business for about 40 years. So in 1980, four friends came together from the banking industry to meet regularly to talk about their careers and some challenges that they may have faced. At this time, there was no organizations for women. Women were not allowed to join Rotary and some other civic organizations, so they felt that they should form their own organization. They sent out an invitation to other businesswomen in the organization, and on September 30, Port St. Lucie Businesswomen was formed in 1980. Over the last 40 years, the group has evolved into a professional women's organization representing a variety of businesses, government officials and leaders, as well as women-owned businesses within the community. To this day, we are continuing to make an impact on our community. Unfortunately, due to COVID, COVID is hampering everything, we were unable to host our annual fashion show for the last two years. So we ended up doing a Brick Pathway Project to celebrate our 40th anniversary. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, for purchasing a brick as part of our fundraiser, and huge thanks to Diane Gallagher, who spearheaded the entire effort and came up with the idea. Over the last 40 years, the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen provided over $200,000 in grants to local nonprofits, as well as over $130,000 in scholarships to 74 women to pursue further education at college. Port St. Lucie Businesswomen will continue to rise to the challenges of our community, and we continue to make a positive impact for the next 40 years to come. Thank you for your continued support, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from the Clerk and Controller for the fiscal year 2021, a fee presentation, and that will be presented by Michelle Miller, our Clerk of the Circuit Court.
Good morning again.
Welcome back.
Hopefully this one works. Kidding. Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for having me here today. As your Clerk and Controller, I am proud to present this check for $280,872.78 in excess fees to St. Lucie County taxpayers and the Board of County Commissioners. We are pleased that even as economic factors have remained tenuous, we're able to return even more taxpayer dollars than we did last year. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment to thank my amazing team. Ladies, if you would come up here and join us, and gentlemen, sorry. I'd like to thank them for their hard work and dedication. Their year-round efforts are crucial in providing keen financial management, and I trust that the B O C C will use these recovered funds for the betterment of St. Lucie County residents. And on a personal note, Mr. Tipton, thank you for your continued support. So can we get a picture?
Sure. Why don't we bring it up here, and then all the commissioners will get together, and we'll get a nice picture. Thank you, Clerk.
Unless she wants to sit in Dan's seat again.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm sorry about that.
We have somebody move down on this end first.
On three. One. Two.
If you want to be in it, I'll share this one.
Three.
You're part of the staff.
I already took the eight.
Uh, sure, I'll-
Somebody's hiding right behind you. Stop hiding. All right, I got everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Clerk.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Oopsie, oopsie. At this time, we will get a, let everyone be seated first. At this time, we'll have a Veterans Day report presented by Diane Wazloski, Community Service Director for St. Lucie County.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board, and happy reorg day for you all. We are bringing you a report, we're kind of changing it up this year. Veterans Day always has a constant date, but the meetings were kind of way before or a little after. So we decided to bring to you a presentation on the events that the veteran staff attended, and some of the things that were happening in the community. So I hope you enjoy it, and I'm going to turn it over to Jose.
Good morning, Chair and board commissioners and administration. For the record, my name is Jose Kaplan, and I manage the Veteran Services Department. And what I'm going to share with you is what the Veteran Services Department did for a week, starting last Saturday all the way to Veterans Day. So beginning November 6 through November 11, we had the following events, starting on the 6. We had- We had the first event was the 36th Annual muster and festival at the Navy SEAL Museum, and this event was held on the 6th. I had Mr. Jake Walton, who is my one of my VSOs, and also Transportation Coordinator, along with Mr. Earl Harmon and Mr. Michael Butler transporting attendees from the parking lots of the event. And we had over 25,000 people, 2,500 people at 10, and we gave rise to over 500 people. It was an all-day event. The second event we had was at the City of Port St. Lucie and Geo Homes Gold Star Family Build. On the 8th, the Port St. Lucie City Council voted unanimously to donate a city-owned property for a Gold Star built. The Sandberg family will be the recipient of this home. A Gold Star family is a family who has actually lost a member of their family in war. They lost their son. He was 26 years old, and they're actually going to build about a house for them. Geo builders volunteered to do the build this time, and they expect to deliver that home on the 4th of July of 2022. The next day, we had the actual groundbreaking. As you can see, the Sandberg family is there, the mayor and councilmen are also there celebrating the groundbreaking. We also had an Indian River State College Veterans Day celebration, where they actually honored youngest and the oldest veteran in the group, the oldest being 100 years old. They had a cake-cutting ceremony, and it was very successful. I had two of my VSOs there. I had Jake Walton and Helen Simpson during that celebration. The next event we had was Paychecks for Patriots. This event was held on November 10th, also at the Riverwalk Center. It was sponsored by Career Source. This event addresses employment needs of service members and veterans across the state. The annual Paychecks for Patriots event brings together employees from current position openings in Florida and veterans, military family candidates. Over the past eight years, more than 6,710 veterans and family members have participated in this event. Very successful. Then we had the Veterans Memorial Park Event. We had several hundred people attend that. I believe a couple of Commissioners were there also. Thank you for supporting us there. And I had two of my staff members there. We had Jake Walton and Penny, my senior staff assistant, present. The next event we had was at Veterans Day Tribute at Tradition Hall. This event was held on the 11th, and it was sponsored by Christ Fellowship Church. And we had the Treasure Coast High School Air Force Junior ROTC lead the presentation of colors. And we also had Congressman Mass present and a few other dignitaries. Very successful also as well. And the last event we had was at Jensen's Annual Veterans Day Celebration. This is done every year. Mr. Jensen, who was a Vietnam veteran, has passed, but his wife Susan has promised to keep this going on until she can't anymore. So it was also very successful, and Commissioner Mitchell was at this event. And I'd like to thank you for that. Then the last thing I have for the presentation here is on November 11th, Governor DeSantis also signed the Annual Veterans Day Florida Proclamation. The state of Florida is recognized as one of the most military and veteran-friendly states in the nation, with 1.5 million veterans living here in the Sunshine State. What I'd like to what I'd like to do now is unfortunately, my staff can't be here to be recognized for this amazing work because they're so busy, and they're taking care of veterans, but I want to give you a little picture of what we do. And this is fiscal year 2020. Calls, we approximately process 12,000 calls in a year. Appointments, we approximately take care of about 600 veterans, widows, and families. Outreaches, we do about 125 outreaches. Transportation, we take approximately 1,200 veterans to their appointments at West Palm Beach and at the VA Hospital. We also are part of Veterans Court, has been very successfully graduating 62 veterans and is currently assisting 15 to get through the program. The VA has distributed $268 million to our population of 2,4907 veterans locally. And what this means is these monies come right back to this county. They're buying houses, they're buying cars, they're buying all their needs right here. And then I'd like to take this opportunity to by name thank my staff. So as VSOs, I got Jake Walton, who is a VSO, and also my Transportation Coordinator, Darius Johnson, who's a VSO, and my Website Coordinator, Helen Simpson, who is my VSO 3, and Personal Backup, she's an amazing young woman, Jeff Norwood, who is a VSO 2, and also the Combat Vet and Coordinator of Wheelchairs for Warriors Program. Brindel Serrano, also a VSO 2, and Work Study Coordinator. And then there are the two ladies that help me directly, Trina Kelly-McLeod, my Operations Office Specialist, and Penny Buie, who is a Senior Staff Assistant. And I also have Andrea Johnson, who is my Housing Coordinator. And last but not least, I want to mention my eight part-time drivers who take our veterans to the VA every day, Monday through Friday. Steve Kimball, Dave Cameron, Joyce Bennett, Michael Butler, Carlos Rodriguez, Richard Lovell, Earl Harmon, and Sandy Ritey. And last but not least, we couldn't do this wonderful work without your support and administration. And I want to thank my Director for always teaching me the ways. This month makes a year of me being part of this staff, and I love working here in Port St. Lucie. And last but not least, I'd like to ask any veteran in the chamber to please stand up because I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day, although belated.
I know we have some.
Danny.
Thank you for your service. And I'm open for questions.
I know that Commissioner Bartz would like to say a few words.
Not questions, but a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, the Sandberg family is well-deserving of this. He owned a business in the city of Port St. Lucie on the boulevard for years and years. And it was a devastating loss, as it would be for anyone, but I know how tough it was. And I know that there is no way that you can possibly know how many events truly were going on to support our veterans. I'm just going to mention this past weekend, the Cricket Club Caribbean American did a beautiful salute to our veterans. And then I want to say that I am really proud of this county for what we do for our veterans. We are a county of veterans. We are cities of veterans. We honor our Gold Star families and our Blue Star families. We have, we are a Purple Heart community, and much, much more. So Jose, thank you for what you do, because it's obvious that it's very needed needed in this community with the number of veterans that we have. Janet, thank you. And for all of those veterans that stood up, thank you for your service. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other things? Thank you very much. The following item was modified prior to the meeting on the Consent Agenda 8B1 Grant and Grant Resolution Acceptance, Florida Humanities Council American Rescue Plan Grant. The item was placed modified from 8F1 to 8B3. On the regular agenda, the County Attorney, Resolution 2021409, Condition Consent to Merger of APP Properties Into An Affility of Ridgewood Infrastructure LLC and Resulting Change of Control of the Fort Pierce FBO LLC with an Attachment Added. Now on to the regular agenda. The following was added prior to the meeting, 10A2, Edna Getler, L.C. LLC versus St. Lucie County Pinesland Reserve Notice of Appeal. On the consent agenda, would anyone like to pull anything for separate discussion?
I just want to make a comment. On 8J3, I always like to recognize, as well as the Chair usually does too, this is Orange Avenue, and it's the tax dollars for the half a cent sales tax. So I always like to recognize those projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend. Words well spoken.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to recognize 8J1, the acceptance of a grant for Taylor Creek Restoration Muck Removal Project. I had the opportunity to invite members of the National Estuary Program and Council to St. Lucie County. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with it, it is right there at Taylor Creek by Harbertown Marina. And the the effort is a hydraulic dredge, and it's it's an incredible process, and it's so much better for the environment and how we accomplish that. And so the comments from South Florida Water Management District and other members of the board were very appreciative of what St. Lucie County has been doing to to clean up our waterways. And that particular grant is in conjunction with many other grants to make that actual process occur. And I'd like to thank Don West and all of his staff and the water quality folks for their efforts. If you haven't had a chance to get out there and see it, it's working every day, and it's a pretty amazing sight. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Well, thank you. And to add to that, we we as a commission found out yesterday through our Legislative Department that we received 4.5 million dollars for septic dis sewer through the the Governor's Office. So that's also great news. Seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and that moves us on to public hearings. This will be led by Karen Valentine presenting from the County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Caroline Valentine, Assistant County Attorney, and I'm joined by Ben Ballser, Assistant Director for the Planning and Development Services.
Good morning.
This is a second public hearing for a proposed ordinance which allows an option for unpaid sidewalks in lieu of paved sidewalks. This would be for residential developments within the urban service boundaries that have lot sizes of 2.5 acres or greater. This partial waiver would apply to internal roads only. On November 2nd, this board approved the second public hearing for the proposed ordinance, which incorporated the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations that the ordinance require a stabilized surface, as well as the with requirements that currently apply to sidewalks also apply. Notice of this public hearing was advertised on November 6th. This is the second of two public hearings, and staff recommends that the board adopt ordinance number 21-039.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anybody in the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close, and we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz. Do I have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is a public hearing for Planning and Development Services. Who'll be taking that?
I think it's Grant.
Corey Benton, good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Chair Mitchell, members of the board, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm Corey Benton, Assistant Planning Manager, and I'm accompanied by Grant Chambers, Civil Engineer with our Engineering Department, our Division. We're presenting Agenda Item 9B1, a paving waiver request that's accompanied by a waiver of the proportionate fair share. It's a petition filed by Daniel and Jessica Toth for a 37-acre parcel of land situated on Muller Road. This morning's public hearing was noticed via display ad in the local newspaper, as well as mailed notice to owners of property within 500 feet. Here's the location of the subject site. Muller Road is roughly one mile south of Okeechobee Road and one mile north of Midway Road, east of 11 Mile Road. Simply for context, the City of Fort Pierce Limits is situated roughly a quarter mile to the southeast, and the City of Port St. Lucie Limits is roughly 3/4 of a mile to the south. The Toths happen to own a parcel of land situated immediately west of the petition site. That is their homestead. They acquired this 37-acre parcel within the last year, and they're proposing a four-lot subdivision. Three of those four lots are proposed at 10 acres, one just over six acres, and they're looking to provide a development pattern comparable to those estate-style lots within the vicinity. The zoning of this property is AG 2.5, allowing for one dwelling unit per two and a half acres. Again, they're conceding a notable portion of their density through their design of all parcels and lots exceeding six acres, but averaging close to nine and a half acres per lot. Here's a zoom of the location. Again, this is east of 11 Mile Road, on Muller Road, with their site plan designed to have access for these prospective residential homes or non-residential agricultural activities from Muller Road. We'll go into the condition of Muller Road in just a few moments. The property does abut Price Road to the south. Price Road is an unimproved and largely unopened right-of-way. It's more of a trail that's utilized for access by one or two properties that are Again, Muller Road is a county-owned and maintained substandard roadway. The pavement travel width is roughly 12 to 14 feet. Our typical standard would be 11 feet for each travelway, totaling 22 feet for your typical paved roadway. In this instance, again, narrow, but paved allows for one lane of traffic to occur, requiring folks to pause, stage, and and work around the unimproved shoulder. The right-of-way width is predominantly 50 feet in this section. With recent site plans, the county has acquired some right-of-way along Muller Road. With this application, the applicants would be providing right-of-way concessions to St. Lucie County. Here's a snapshot of the proposed subdivision of land, showing the larger lots, proposed three at 10 acres in size, and the one lot adjacent to their homestead being 6.77 acres. So again, lower density than the minimum standard of the Land Development Code with a four-lot subdivision. And they are seeking a waiver of the paving requirements of Muller Road. Our Land Development Code would require for any project requiring site plan, in this instance, the division of land into three or more lots requires a site plan approval in St. Lucie County, this being a minor site plan administrative consideration other than the paving requirement. And we'll go into the standards that this board considers waiver of paving, but also waiver proportionate fair share contributions. So the three criteria for staff and the board to consider, whether the road paving is essential to provide adequate access to the proposed development and through the surrounding area, or that the road will be paved as part of the county's five-year road program, or an improved municipal service taxing or benefit unit, known as MSTUs or MSBUs, and we'll cover that in just a moment, or that the access road does not have adequate right-of-way in which to construct the necessary paving improvements in accordance with St. Lucie County standards. The criteria that's referenced in staff's analysis is that the road paving is not essential to provide adequate access to this proposed development. Again, larger tract development consistent with the very rural surrounding areas. Today, we have roughly 23 to 24 homes that rely upon Muller Road for access. It's not a through street, connects to 11 Mile to the west, to the east. It does have a terminus. Some of the traffic, I think that folks have experienced recent or in the past, was related to South Florida Water Management District's reservoir development. That's largely a completed project to the east that stores water for water quality. And again, we've we've heard of recent development projects approved within the City of Fort Pierce Limits to the east and southeast in Willow Lakes and villages at Midway. Additionally, that one item that could be considered here is whether adequate right-of-way exists for the paving improvements. Again, 11 Mile Road, there's a very narrow right-of-way. So in theory, full pavement from Midway Road or Okeechobee Road to this project site would begin at Midway or Okeechobee, and 11 Mile's a very narrow right-of-way, and sections of Muller Road are rather narrow. The design could work within 50 feet, especially with the applicant's concession of right-of-way. But again, staff is assessing and placing a priority on whether this development needs the paved improvement to is justified for four lots. Prior to staff's recommendation, I'll highlight that we had received Prior to staff's recommendation, I'll highlight that we had received correspondence from three owners of property adjacent, one supporting the request, Richard Vishon. I spoke with John O'Connell regarding the project, and his only concerns were if someone were to utilize Price Road for access of these lots. Highlighted access is designed via Moller Road, again, Price Road being much more substandard and largely unopened. So that is not the design of this proposal. Then there was a gentleman who stated his opposition to this request citing increased traffic in the area inclusive of 11 Mile Road, and that public record was forwarded to the Board prior to this meeting. But in considering the Land Development Code analysis and the facts presented this morning to the Board, staff is recommending that the Board issue a conditional waiver for the paving requirements and the provision of a proportionate fair share, requiring that any future owners, including the current owners, their heirs and assigns agree to participate, shall be a yes vote in a lawfully established municipal service boundary unit or taxing unit. This is very similar to a prior action for the Moller Road Ranches project to the east, which was also a four-lot or four parcel subdivision. So again, in the future, if there's desire from the residents, the stakeholders, and the county to redevelop Moller Road and the surrounding roadway links to resemble that of typical county standards, that would be a mechanism and a lawful approach to facilitate that with joint investment in those improvements. Staff is available for any inquiry, and we do have the applicant's representative, Todd Maury, present this morning.
Again, this is a, does that conclude?
Yes, sir.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to, from the public, like to speak on this subject? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing for this and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next up, we have Public Safety, St. Lucie County Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity Application, and presenting will be Karen Kozak.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Karen Kozak, Emergency Management Safety Planner, presenting on Item 9C1. San Jose County Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity Application, Reassure Non-Emergency Transportation Incorporated. Reassure Non-Emergency Transportation Incorporated has submitted an application for Class F Wheelchair Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, COPCN. At its meeting on September 8, 2021, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council reviewed the application, determined the application was in compliance with the standards of review set forth in Section 18-54 of the San Jose Code of Ordinances. Accordingly, the Council voted six to zero to approve the application. The Public Safety Director has notified the city managers of Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie of the pending application. To date, no responses have been received from the cities. Copies of the application in Sections 18-54 and 18-56 of the San Jose County Code of Ordinances are attached. Previous action. The item was presented at the November 2nd, 2021 meeting. Upon review, the application was tabled until the November 16, 2021 meeting to ensure compliance. The application has been deemed to be compliant. Financial impact, none. Recommendation. Staff recommends the Board to determine the application of Reassure Non-Emergency Transportation Incorporated for a Class F Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity meets the standards of review set forth in Section 18-56, approve the application, and authorize the Chair to sign the Class F Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. I just want to thank you for checking into this. I know that you were caught off guard in being relatively new to the position, so you got back to me very, very quickly after researching it, so I want to say thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend and a second by Commissioner Bartz.
No.
Or Commissioner Town, Hutchinson, I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
Just quick comment. So I've got to tell you that I am concerned that we are going to continue approving these services, and I'm very, very concerned about the fact that many of them are unable to staff. And I get concerned when we have two, I think competition is great, but I think that we also need to look to the future and realize, or at least the now future, that we could actually end up putting people out of business if, in fact, you continue to try and staff. So just more to the fellow Commissioners and not to you, Ms. Kozak, but thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for expressing that concern. It is something that we do continue to monitor closely, and we will continue to keep everyone up to date of our results that we get during our assessments.
Again, in the future, it may be a great option for everybody, but I don't think that we're there yet. Staffing is a problem with this nationwide, so it's not just St. Lucie County.
Thank you.
But thank you again.
Mr. Chair, I just want to follow up with what Commissioner Bartz said. So I disagree with this because of the fact, these companies that do this are generally very small companies. They're family-owned. It's generally two or three employees. And in all the conversations in the history going backwards, it's been your small mom and pops that are doing this. So actually, this is a way to give people options and choices rather than going with the big company, to have a variety of three or four of them out there. It makes it more sustainable for the services to be offered. So I mean, I agree that we need to be concerned about things, but something like this, I don't think we need to.
Mr. Chair, once again, I see what you are saying, Commissioner Townsend. I'm talking about an overall and not necessarily these couple of specifics. I just want to make sure that we are cognizant and looking at it in an overall, because I think that we get applications on a regular basis. And again, just my concern down the road, the little mom and pops, they're working and they're working hard, and I love locals, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Back to the regular agenda and the County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is relates to a proposed merger of APP Properties into an affiliate of Ridgewood Infrastructure LLC. Assistant County Attorney Caroline Valentin will be presenting this item.
Good morning again. Fort Pierce FBO LLC leases property at the airport as a fixed base operation that provides general aviation services. APP Properties owns and operates Fort Pierce FBO and intends to merge with Ridgewood Infrastructure LLC. Ridgewood Infrastructure is a New York-based investment fund that invests in large-scale public infrastructure across the country. The proposed merger would result in a change of control in the Fort Pierce FBO, which does require consent by this Board according to the terms of the lease. Before you, is a proposed resolution which would provide that consent conditioned upon the merging parties correcting certain deficiencies at the airport in a timely manner. That's outlined in the lesser's conditional consent to merger, which is attached as an exhibit to the resolution. Staff recommends that the Board adopt Resolution 2021-409 and authorize the Chair to sign the lessor's conditional consent to merger as approved by the County Attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Any questions?
I just have a couple of comments. First, I'd like to recognize that we do have Mr. Harrow and his son in the audience today, and it has been really wonderful to work with you, Tom. I'm excited for where this is taking us. I know that it's going to move us forward into the vision, what this Board has, and so I know you're not leaving far away, and they're still going to be involved. So I think this is the beginning of great things that are going to happen out there, and we're all going to move forward, and I'm looking forward to where it's going to go. So thank you for your friendship in the past.
Thank you.
So if nobody else has any comments, I'd like to approve this.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Zadowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have 10A2. Edna Getler, who will be presenting?
Mr. Chair, before you go into this one, I'd like to go on record that I will be abstaining and refraining from any comment and/or discussion on this item as it is a conflict with a family relative.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Townsend will be recusing herself.
Commissioner Hutchinson. Commissioner Hutchinson.
Hutchinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, as you indicated, relates to a lawsuit that the county's involved in and is currently involved in. It also relates to the Pinelands Preserve and the access to that preserve. The county, and way of background, the county in 1998 acquired property from Murphy White Dairy for a purchase price slightly over $1 million. We received at the time a grant from the Florida Communities Trust of about half of that, and the county's Environmental Alliance Bond Program provided the other half of the funding. It was determined to be an A site. It is a very beautiful site. At the time, we acquired it, like we do all of our properties, we obtained title insurance. We had somebody examine title, not on county staff, an independent title agent, and we purchased title insurance. That's what we do every time we buy property, so that we did everything that we were supposed to do. Access was insured at that time. We unfortunately, about 20 years later, or more than 20 years after we acquired in 2019, a neighbor sued the county and another user of that access easement, a grove, and complained that the county didn't have the ability to access the property on a private basis or a public basis. So the case went to hearing in October of this year on a motion for summary judgment, which basically means that there's no trial with live testimony. It's basically the facts are stipulated and it's a legal issue, and the judge decides. The judge determined on the private easement that there was not a private easement in favor of the county based on a variety of factors in terms of the chain and the documents that were in the chain of title. The judge felt that there was not sufficient proof that the corporation actually assigned the representatives in a corporate capacity. And so she ruled that the county does not have access through the private part of this. The county is being defended in this case by an attorney paid for by the title company, so the county and its taxpayers are not paying for any of this. The attorney representing the county, paid for by the title company, is recommending that the county appeal the judgment based on his review of the law. We are in a unique position. We want the title insurance to continue. The attorney for the title company and the county is recommending that we approve it. The title company has yet to determine whether to fund the appeal, but the clock is running. And so, given that we don't meet again until December 7th, I'm recommending, based on the title attorney's recommendation, that we appeal it, but subject to confirmation from the title company that they will agree to pay for the cost of the appeal. If the title company does not confirm that, then we will not be appealing this judgment. So staff recommends that we appeal based on the recommendation, subject to approval of the title company funding the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move. Approval staff recommendation with conditions stated.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, could you just restate the fact that I did it?
Oh, yes, and just let the record reflect that Commissioner Hutchinson reclused herself on that.
Right, and just for the Board's information, the public, there is a requirement that there be an abstention memorandum prepared. My office will prepare that for Commissioner Hutchinson, and that will be filed with a clerk within 15 days. We do that any time a Commissioner abstains.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is Item 10A3. As you indicated, this particular item relates to ongoing conflict resolution that the county's engaged in with the city of Port St. Lucie on road and park impact fees. The conflict resolution was actually initiated by the city back in June or July of this year. There's a three-phase process. The first phase is a conflict assessment process with the city manager and the county administrator and their staffs meeting together in an attempt to define the issues and resolve. We engaged in that on three separate meetings, and were unfortunately unsuccessful in resolving the issue. The second phase is a joint public meeting between the two elected bodies in this case. We actually met with the city on October 27th of this year at the IRSC Pruitt Ranch. There was a facilitator, Dr. Bob Lee, that both parties agreed to, retired, I think, city manager, and so we attempted to meet and, again, discuss and resolve the issues. The Board indicated at that time that one of the key issues, really the key issue from a county perspective, was that the county maintains sovereignty over the funding, the operation, and the maintenance of county roads. The city had include and is including county roads in its mobility fee without the county's consent or authorization. The county felt that that was a threshold issue. We asked the city council representatives, there were four members present, there's one vacancy that's going to get filled on December the 7th, a special election, and three, of my recollection, is three of the four members sitting there, council members determined that they would not remove the county roads from the city's mobility fee. The remaining council person determined that she needed more information, as I recall. We discussed this briefly at our informal meeting in, I think it was October or November. It was just, it was past November, on November the 9th, and the Board directed that this item be adjourned for Board discussion today. I have prepared a draft resolution, which if adopted, would direct the county administrator to initiate the third step in the process, which is mediation. So the conflict resolution, if the Board adopts this, would continue, but it would be in a formal mediation process where you would have a mediator, the two parties would be represented, there would be breakout rooms, it would be what you normally would do in a lawsuit. It's typically required, so there still would be a possibility of resolving it. I've outlined in the resolution, the state law that I believe applies in this case, which in essence says that the county is responsible for county roads, not the city. We are responsible for design, permitting, construction, funding, operation of county roads. I do not believe the city has the legal authority to include county roads in a city mobility fee without the county's consent, and which we have not given. So with that in mind, this resolution, if you adopt it, would direct the county administrator to alert the city that we desire to proceed to mediation, the final phase. Staff recommends approval.
Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Human Resources with Tom Epsky and Cara De Pasquali.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Once again, congratulations and best wishes for a successful year ahead. I'm presenting on Item 10B1. For the record, my name is Tom Epsky from your Human Resource and Risk Management Department. With me is my colleague, Cara De Pasquali, your Human Resource Risk Manager. We're here today, by and large, for a housekeeping item. The Board has previously approved the The board has previously approved the stop-loss rates as it was included in the funding for fiscal year 2022 and the group health insurance rates. However, the Symmetra contract, which is before you today, was not quite hardened between the vendor and the county attorney. So, we are asking approval now for the chair to be able to execute that contract at the rates that were previously approved, I believe in September.
Thank you, Mr. Epsky. Is there any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Epsky.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Parks and Recreation. Who'll be handling this, Mr. Tiff?
It'll be Mr. Redden coming forward, sir.
Hey, Willie. Good morning.
Before I begin my brief presentation, I'd like to ask the Boatright family to please stand. If there are any family members in attendance, please stand as well. Just remain standing for a brief moment, if you will. Mr. Chair, again, congratulations.
Good morning and thank you.
Distinguished board, good morning. For the record, my name is Willie Redden, Interim Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. I'm here today to serve as a sponsor on behalf of the Boatright family to ask for your consideration in naming the pool at the Lincoln Park Regional Park. Arthur Boatright. Mr. Arthur Lee Boatright was a native of Fort Pierce. He loved his family and the community where he grew up. After graduating from Fort Pierce Central High School, he attended Indian River State College, formerly known as Indian River Community College, where he played baseball and received an Associate's of Arts degree. He then went on to Southern University of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, on a scholarship to play baseball. He returned home in the late 70s and began working for the county as a lifeguard at the Lincoln Park Pool until it closed. After that, Mr. Boatright went to work for the St. Lucie County School Board, where he continued to exert his passion for baseball and youth sports. He coached baseball at Lincoln Park Academy, taught physical education at Sunrise Academy, and refereed baseball games and other youth activities throughout the Treasure Coast. In 1998, while working with special education students, he was once again offered a job with the county. He began as an aquatic supervisor at the Lincoln Park Pool, wanted to reopen, and was quickly promoted to aquatic supervisor two. His love for the water started at an early age when he first learned to swim in the projects off North 29th Street. He inspired others to learn to swim and to respect the water. Pool safety regulations were not what they are today, and Mr. Boatright would often find himself supervising a disproportionate number of kids at the pool daily, but he never complained. He was serious about his profession and always kept current with latest aquatics and water safety certifications. The children's safety was his primary concern, and there was never an incident or accident on his watch. Mr. Boatright was very passionate about the Lincoln Park Pool, and he took great pride in the care of the facility and its visitors. He was a well-known fixture at the pool and in the community. He taught a great many children, adults, and some of his own family members how to swim. After working at the pool for a little more than 12 years, his health began to fail, and he retired in 2010. He passed away on Friday, February 3rd, 2012. In recognition of his service and dedication to the community, county staff, his family, and friends feel it befitting to humbly ask the board that the Lincoln Park Regional Park Pool, located at 1211 Avenue M, be named the Arthur Lee Boatright Pool. We feel this associating would allow his legacy to live on because of the deep affection he had for the facility and the community he served. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. That's an awesome recognition of a man that gave back to his community.
Absolutely.
I know that staff recommends board approval to name this, and authorization for the chair to sign the documents is approved by the county attorney. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski.
You got seconds.
And everybody's second. But to the family, God bless, and that's an awesome accomplishment. You know, your legacy and life are your children, and by you all being here, it's quite a tribute to Mr. Boatright. So, again, thank you, and the motion is approved unanimously.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the family. Okay, next up, we have Leslie Olson from PDS, and this is not a formal vote, it's just an update from our director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the commission, Leslie Olson, Planning and Development Services Director for your monthly update on our administrative approvals. It was a light month, so this will go quickly. And since it's a light month, I thought it was a good opportunity to tell you a little bit about something that we approved last month. I got some additional information from the business owner, and it's always great to share interesting and exciting news about our local businesses here in St. Lucie County. So, I'm just going to start out with our October development. We had an executive extension for Savannah Club where they extended their approval to put in a mobile leasing office because they haven't done it yet. Pretty basic work. But last month, we talked about FA Precast. It is also known as Florida Architectural Precast, and they relocated from Kings Highway up to the Airport East Industrial Park into a former boat manufacturing facility. And we had to do a use determination because that particular use, kind of a low-intensity concrete fabrication, is not actually allowed in that zoning district. It's silent. And so, this board has given me the authority to determine whether or not that is a consistent use in that zoning district, even if it isn't called out specifically. As a result, we went to see their operation, which is impressive, and they are expanding and doing a lot of work all over the state of Florida and in the Bahamas and across America. And it's exciting to have a company like that here. For instance, you'll see that they did the Florida Capital Hardscape and Sign up in Tallahassee. This is a beautiful piece of work done for the Palm Beach Zoo as their hardscape and sign. He didn't send me a picture of it, but they are also doing this very post-modern architectural shell for the Bank of the Bahamas that's going up right now. It's really, it's a fascinating plan. I can't wait to see a picture of it. So, I just want to share that with you because it's exciting when we have people doing exciting things here in St. Lucie County, and they definitely are. So, thank you for the authorization to help us be nimble and get people moving because they really had a timeline that they had to meet. So, thank you for that. And that is not, that was from last month, and I left it in there by mistake. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Olson?
Great, thank you.
Seeing none, thank you, Leslie. Any comments?
Good job.
Very good job. Next up, we'll have Frank Amandro from Public Safety. Listen up, everybody. This is great news, developing a pipeline of talent.
Sorry. All right. Sorry.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners.
Good morning.
Frank Amandro, the Assistant Director for the Public Safety Department, presenting on item 10E1. As you said, Chair, it's an exciting opportunity to partner with the college. As you all have heard from the EDC at the last commission meeting, hiring and retaining qualified employees is a challenge in today's market, and our 911 Communications Center is also experiencing this same challenge. The Public Safety Department met with Tim Moore, the new president for the college, a dynamic individual, and he challenged us in the meeting. He said, "How can the college serve public safety?" So, we have been working with the new dean for public safety education, Ray Sacaro. Unfortunately, he could not be here today, but another dynamic individual that we've been working with. So, what we have been doing, or what we're asking, is the county to, is requesting to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Indian River State College to establish a 911 telecommunications officer certification program. The parties agreed to allow, to follow the guidelines of Indian River State College in providing college credit classes with sufficient time for students to complete the Florida Department of Health Public Safety telecommunications officer certification program. The parties also agree that the Public Safety Department, specifically in the 911 Communications Center Division, will help identify subject matter experts that can be hired as instructors by the college to provide the practical portion of the program. Furthermore, the Public Safety Department will provide the equipment necessary to deliver the practicum courses. In other words, the real-life, hands-on training portion of the program. The Public Safety Department will designate personnel to monitor the quality of instruction to ensure compliance with continuing education and the standards established by the state, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, and county standards. Students who successfully complete the program will receive their certification from the Florida Department of Health as a telecommunications officer. No previous action, there is no financial impact towards the public safety or the county. Staff recommends the board to allow the chair to execute the memorandum of understanding with the Indian River State College.
Any questions? I just got to say, a trained workforce is the most important thing on a three-legged stool for our county to grow and grow exponentially in the right direction. So, kudos to all you that put this together.
Absolutely. You know, the college is a phenomenal partner for us. I think that they can reach our young men and women at a different level than we can here at Public Safety. So, I think that we should have the program up within three to six months. I think it's a fabulous opportunity to hire our young people in our community as our 911 dispatchers and call takers. You know, we are struggling mightily to do that. It is a problem across the country, so I think this partnership is a great opportunity for us to hopefully overcome those challenges.
Yes, Chairman, and members of the board. Mark Lozier, Innovation and Performance, previously, and now Budget Manager. I wanted to let you know that the Florida Benchmarking Consortium recognized this actual program as a result of our Innovation and Performance team. This was a Green Belt Six Sigma project. Now, we had nothing to do with actually coming up with the solution, the department, and the IRSC came up with the solution. However, it ties very much into your budget. If you remember you adding the positions during the budget process, we are right now in the control phase of the project, and the Florida Benchmarking Consortium said, "This is unprecedented as far as you actually following through and managing and cultivating the talent pipeline that feeds the churn for your turnover. That is fantastic. That's unbelievable." So, we're in the process of monitoring to see the positions that you provided, because there was a lot of overtime. With the pipeline corrections that the department and IRSC are working on, we'll fix the problem permanently and maximize efficiency by reducing the churn, by reducing attrition, by reducing turnover, by hiring qualified people. I wanted to let you know that the Benchmarking Consortium thought this was a highlight of the conference this year, and I wanted to let you know how it's tying together, and it's not over. We have a year of the control phase of the project, and I hope on the backside, we see the attrition rate, the turnover rate, and the dispatch center go way down. And so, it's unlike any other thing where you just do a study and you throw it up. We're actually doing it. So, I want to thank you all for providing the positions and the department for taking the action that was creative. Creative.
Just like golf, sometimes I'd rather be lucky than good, and I'm so lucky, we are lucky as a community for Indian River State College to step up and do this.
Absolutely.
I'd recommend you approve it.
And, Mr. Chairman, as part of the process, you know, paramedic firefighters go through IRSC, and this might be an opportunity to actually maybe integrate some of those opportunities to educate those in running, seeking firefighter or paramedic, because oftentimes, they're not understanding what's happening at the 911 center. So, just having that introduction of information may often be beneficial to those who are actually out on the line.
Commissioner, as you know, you know, going back to when the Public Safety Department was built many years ago, they actually had a model 911 center within the public safety. Why that went away, I don't have the history there, so I could not explain it, but you're absolutely right, bringing that back, and that's the ultimate goal, is to really have that model within the public safety. And our own dispatchers will be providing some of that instruction. So, it's a great opportunity for them as well. So, I think it's going to be a great partnership.
Thank you. And seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski and a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Much appreciated.
Okay. Hello there, Howard.
Good morning.
Mr. Satterley will be making some announcements.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's like pitching the last pitch of the game, not even the last out. Anyway, just the announcements real quick. We, the board has a joint meeting with the city of Fort Pierce this Thursday. That's at 9:00 AM. The board's December meeting schedule has changed a little bit, just for the public to know that we have a regular meeting on the 7th, and then we're going to have two meetings on the 14th. In the morning is the regular morning meeting, and then we'll have our informal meeting at 1:00 PM in the afternoon. We are closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. And just one last little bit of good news. Commissioner Hutchinson and I and Patrick went down to the Water Management District last week, and finally getting the C-25 project going. Commissioner Hutchinson, do you want to share any more about that?
Now, it was a long day of sitting through their entire governing board meeting because we were last on the agenda, I think.
Pretty much.
That day. But I would like to thank staff for being down there and sitting through all of that, and it was quite nice to have a full board support for that project. As many of you know, that C-25 has been lingering, so South Florida has taken it over entirely from the Army Corps and are moving forward with it, and actually was able to accelerate by two years that project. So, in regards to your comments earlier, Commissioner Zadowski, in regards to Taylor Creek, the muck removal going on, this too will help, hopefully in the future, to prevent having to go through this labor-filled type project that we had to go through.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson, for your endless hours of making this come to fruition.
And, Mr. Chair, just as part of the presentation yesterday, there is a, the pipeline that goes from Taylor Creek all the way up to our spoil site, about three miles. As part of the conversation, questions and answers came, and the engineers are sitting there having a discussion, and because we're going to move forward with the Harbor Point development, as well as the relationships we have at Harbor Point, Harbor, uh, bleh, Harbor Cove Marina and Cracker Boy, there's an opportunity, I believe, that we can bring back at a later time, having that pipeline be placed in perpetuity so that that can actually be set up to move materials from a dredge site to our spoil site. And as part of the conversation, Kathy Lamartina indicated that while the C-25 process is moving forward, it looks like they're going to need to dredge the C-25 in advance of or during that process. So, having that as a pipeline, to be able to do that dredge and manage the spoil material, it might be an option going forward. So, I just wanted to share that as part of the conversation, as to the work that you've done, Commissioner Hutchinson, has been incredible. It's a life's work. It really is. It really is. And we thank you for your efforts.
Well, thank you. As we've often said, it's always a team effort.
And I'm just going to take a point of personal privilege before we adjourn. We will not be having a regular meeting before Thanksgiving. I know that myself and my family and the whole community, we have much to be thankful for, so I wish blessings on each and every one of you and have a safe and joyous holiday. It's my favorite holiday, four days of no work, football, and food. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rosion District, first on the agenda is the general public comment. Seeing none, we'll move forward with an approval of the minutes of October 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and we have a consent agenda. Is there anything, any commission wishes for discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion once again passes. I think even before we close, if you have not had the opportunity to go out and see the ongoing work with the dredge, doing the long-awaited and patiently waiting-for sand trap, that will help us in the future, hopefully. It is ongoing. It was a beautiful day yesterday. Josh met me out there with some members of the Sheriff's Department, and we were going over all the details, and it was amazing, the visitors over on the boardwalk and so forth. That was the topic out there. A lot of picture-taking.
A lot of good, great drone pictures also.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We'll call together, the call to order the meeting of the Mosquito Control District for November 16th. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2021, Mosquito Control District.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a consent agenda warrants 55, 56, and 1 through 5. Motion to approve.
So moved, approval.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There are no regular scheduled items on the regular agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We'll come together as the environmental board. First item of business will be general public comment, anyone wishing to address the board. Seeing a move, we'll come back to the board. Approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion for.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there no other items on the agenda? Move to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, come together as Sustainability District. First item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? Come on forward. Okay, seeing no movement, closing the public hearing. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes from August 17th, 2021, September 21st, 2021, and October 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Have a second? Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no items on the consent. There are no items on the regular agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.